Good evening and welcome to the 7:30 meeting for July 9th for Lynchburg City Council. Please stand for invocation by Councilmember Wright, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in a moment of contemplation. Today we gather in service of our community. We gather to improve the quality of life for our fellow citizens and to ensure our collective safety, health, and happiness. Please grant us the strength and wisdom to evaluate the issues in front of us objectively, thoughtfully, and in a spirit of genuine collaboration and sincere goodwill. The challenges facing Lynchburg are great, but so too are the possibilities. We offer thanks for the many talented professionals who come to work on behalf of our city each day and for the opportunity afforded to us as members of this body and this community to join them in this humbling service. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this evening now is a great part of our agenda in our meeting that we get to recognize our former clerk of council Valerie Chambers. And so I'm going to come down for a couple of minutes and I'm going to call Valerie up and the Vice Mayor's coming with me so that we can recognize Ms. Chambers on her retirement. Going to make her stand and yeah, there you go. No, you're going to stand right here. So tonight we're recognizing Ms. Chambers. We have recognized her at an employee retirement program, but we thought it fitting also to bring her back into chambers and just tell her how much, one, we appreciated her service as the clerk of council. She has worked through several mayors and I actually have some dates here of when she started and so I wanted to be correct. She started in 1987.
That's correct.
For some people that's a long way back.
Thirty-two.
Yep, thirty-two years. Public Works Engineering Department. She was the secretary. Other departments she worked at for the city include City Attorneys, Risk Management Department. She also worked in the City Manager's Office, starting in October 11th, 1993. She held the position?
Ninety-one.
Oh, ninety-one. See, that's the clerk. She always corrected. She keeps us straight. She kept us straight. She held the position of Deputy Clerk of Council from August 2001 to November of 2009. She was the interim clerk of council from November of 2009 until January of 2011 and she became the clerk of council in 2011. And so Valerie served the city well for thirty-two years. Not only did she serve the city, but she served the community because as the clerk, Valerie was the face for council day-to-day. When citizen requests came in, organization requests, she was the person they communicated to, scheduled with. And I know for the mayor's position, having been in Vice Mayor and Mayor, the clerk really keeps the positions rolling, the schedules, the agendas. And so she kept us where we needed to be, on time, even if she was calling us right in there when we're parking and coming in, but she made sure that we were in place for the community helping us where we needed. And so we have a special gift for you. And what I would like to do is to give other council members the opportunity to have comments. Councilmember Helgason?
Well, thank you. Well, thank you Valerie. It was fun. About a week and a half ago, at the honored banquet, I got to be one of the family in Valerie, with all of her family. And so at Christmas when they look and say, "Who's this white guy?", they can say, "I was right up in there with all the rest of them and we had a good time and it was great to see you and thank you for all your service."
Valerie, thank you so much. It's just you are a shining example of dedication to the city and your commitment has been just outstanding. I really value the time that you spent with us and just frankly, I've learned from you. I've learned from your predecessor and it's amazing the responsibility that the clerk has. And I learned so much from you and thank you so much for what you gave to the city. We very much appreciate it and I wish you so much fun in your retirement.
Valerie, again, thank you so much for all the work you've done for our city, for our community, not just the city council, but for the community in overall, with the so many museums and so many things you've done for our community. And thank you personally for when I started at City Council, I think it was 2016, I believe, you were so helpful in orienting myself and Mary Jane into our duties for City Council and orienting us in all the different departments that we have. So such a wealth of knowledge that you have poured into us, I really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thanks. Hi Valerie.
Hi everybody.
Congratulations to you and obviously thanks for your service and for all you do for our community because you really, I know that you've got your hands in just a million pots and you're really doing a lot of good for our community and telling our community a story. So, thank you very much and congratulations.
Could I ask something else?
Councilmember Peril?
I just think this is funny. So the other day at the State of the City address, I'm walking down and there's Valerie standing there and kind of directing people around and I went, "Hey Valerie, okay, we're going where?". And just asked her a bunch of stuff that she would usually just absolutely take care of us about, you know, tell us where to go, when to be there, when to sit down, when to shut up, when to talk, you know, all those key things. And then I got all that information, I just kept walking up the hill to the thing and I was, "She's not our clerk anymore. She's here as a person." I got really tickled, so I immediately turned around, I gave her a big hug.
And that's one thing, because I know that City Manager, one thing that she said, Valerie is a fierce volunteer. And so she volunteered on numerous committees and several boards with us. And so for everyone now publicly, this is the official, you are released from your duties, you are in retirement, and you can get all volunteer calls for people that need a volunteer. But she is tremendous wealth of information, resources, help, assistance, and you always did it with a smile. And so for that, we thank you. And we have a little something for you. So for people who do and give a lot of service to the city, we give them a key to the city. And so this is your presentant to Valerie P. Chambers, Lynchburg Clerk of Council, thirty-two years of service, July 9th, 2019. Thank you Valerie. There you go. You're not saying, "I didn't say anything"?
No, you didn't.
Excuse me. Because she said, "I didn't say anything", so I'm going to say something right now. Valerie was not only the face of the city, she helped us, she saved my face a lot of times and I think she wants me to tell everybody how much she helped me through. No, I'm just kidding. No, we really miss you and you did a tremendous job for the city and appreciate all the, not only what you do for the city, but all you do for the community as well. Thank you very much. We miss your smiling face and you ushering me around where I have to be and calling my daughter and telling her to make sure, "Where is she? Get her over here." Anyway, thank you so much.
You're welcome. I just want to thank City Council and the citizens of Lynchburg for me having the opportunity to serve as their clerk of council for the past eight years. I enjoyed working with everyone. It was a challenge and a rewarding experience. So again, I just want to thank everyone for that, for my service to the city and to City Council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Feel free to stay with us as long as you want tonight for the meeting. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections. Consent agenda, public comment, public hearing and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items and all items may be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Somebody with seconds.
Thank you. The motion has been made in second. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes six with one absent. Thank you. Next are public comments and during public comments, individual speakers have three minutes to speak and those representing a group have five minutes to speak typically. City Council takes comments made during the public comment section of the agenda under advisement and may refer concerns to the City Manager for follow-up. Public comment number seven, we're hearing from a citizen, Ronnie Stimmer. Is Ronnie Stimmer present? All right. Well, thank you. We will move to the next citizen, Mr. Gerald Cheatham.
Good evening. Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan and City Council. My name is Gerald Cheatham, 6216 Old Mill Road, Lynchburg, and I'm here representing concerned citizens from the Pluridian Gardens area of the city neighborhood and that's Florida Avenue and Gilmore Circle. And would you all please stand? So, we are here tonight to ask City Council to look into an ordinance or amend Section 38-3 for obstruction trees and vegetations in the Lynchburg City Code. Why are we here? We state or believe that, first of all, the petitioners are residents of Lynchburg; two, that the real property values in the immediate areas of Gilmore Circle and Florida Avenue. Okay, can you all hear me now? Oh, I'm sorry. We say to believe that the real property values in the immediate areas of Gilmore Circle and Florida Avenue have been and continue to be adversely affected by the inattention and beautification of the property located at 1809 Florida Avenue. We state or believe that the property at 1809 Florida Avenue has a current assessment that ranges from about $20,000 to $40,000 and more in less value than houses in comparative ranch-style homes of the houses in the neighborhood. We know that Chapter 38 Trees and Vegetation, Article 1, Section 38.3 states that obstruction states that it shall be the duty of any person or persons owing or owning or occupying real property bordering on any street upon which property there may be trees, shrubs, weeds, and other vegetation to prune such trees, shrubs, weeds, and vegetation in such a manner that they will not obstruct or shade the streetlights, obstruct the passage of pedestrians on sidewalks, or obstruct vision of traffic signs, or obstruct view of any street or alley intersection. The minimum clearance of any overhanging portion therefore shall be eight feet over sidewalks and fourteen feet overall. Further, it shall be the duty of any person or persons owning or occupying real property bordering on any street upon which property there may be trees, shrubs, weeds, and other vegetation which cause potential hazard to public safety to prune or remove such trees, shrubs, weeds, and other vegetation. So, based on that, we believe that an ordinance does not, that the current ordinance does not sufficiently address the potential adverse effect on real property values or the deterioration of the character of the neighborhood in which it is located. And therefore, we ask that an amended or new ordinance require a certain minimum standard as used when the obstruction affects public safety or the public right-of-way, that it be adopted or a new one created. And if this is adopted, it would positively impact property values and directly enhance the beauty of the residence, the immediate neighborhood, and the larger neighborhood in general. And I would like to submit pictures of the residence for the record.
All right, thank you. What did you say?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for the presentation and we'll discuss further with the City Manager and her staff. All right, next is the public hearing. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public. An individual speaker shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks and a group may have only one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. And then upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed and the matter referred to council for deliberation. Number nine is public hearing for the consideration of a lease of city-owned property at 300 Rutherford Street to Three Ridge Organics for a period of three years. The leased property will be used for the purpose of growing vegetables for wholesale production and staff will provide a brief summary of the request. Ms. Hart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Three Ridge Organics owned by William Leighton, who is here tonight in attendance, approached us about leasing the property that we own at 300 Rutherford Street. It is a small urban organic business. He did graduate from Co-Stars, which is a program of the Office of Economic Development and Tourism. This is a standard lease agreement that we use. Some particulars about this particular lease are that for the first year, in lieu of rent, Three Ridge Organics will provide fresh vegetables and fruit to our seven recreation centers. He is also willing to provide three recreational programs on matters of environment and urban farming. After that, in years two and three, he will pay $1,375 per month. It's about $16,000 a year in rent. In addition to that, he will maintain the property. I checked with the assessor office, this is market value for that piece of property, the $1,375. I will be available to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hart. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'm William Leighton, owner of Three Ridge Organics and inventor of the Three Ridge Organics Growing Systems. My system is completely environmental safe. We use no chemical fertilizers or chemical sprays of any kind on my growing system. Also, what we will be doing here in Lynchburg is providing Lynchburg with fresh produce and vegetables 365 days a year and with no chemicals or anything like that. So we're going to try to help dry up all the food deserts that's in the city on this property.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Leitner. Thank you. And if we have any other questions, we'll call you back up. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, without opposition, there's no need for rebuttal, so the public hearing is closed and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? This was also reviewed by the Physical Development Committee on June 25th of this year, so I will turn to our Chair of the PDC Committee, Councilmember Peril.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did review this, we reviewed the lease and I would like to disclose that the proprietor brought us some fresh vegetables, but we did check, it was less than the limit for gifting so that we felt that we could accept such vegetables. There were cucumbers, there were strawberries, and I think there was something else, but I definitely took home a cucumber and a thing of, and tomatoes, yes. And I definitely took home a thing of strawberries and cucumbers and they were delicious. Not that that influences my decision on this in any way, shape, or form. All right, so this is an opportunity to take a converted brownfield. So remember, this used to be a site that was an industrial site that was contaminated. It has now been through the brownfield remediation process converted into a green field, is a nice green field, obviously. And what the petitioner is planning to do is put in a greenhouse to grow fresh fruits and vegetables at a market lease rate for the city. It sounds to me like a win-win. And the lease is structured in a creative way that allows the opportunity for the proprietor to grow, no pun intended, and I think it's going to, I think it's going to work really well. And so therefore, PDC recommended wholeheartedly that this be brought forward to full council and adopted, make that motion on behalf of PDC, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's no need for a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Wright, Councilmember Helgason?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Councilmember Peril stated regarding the tomatoes, I love tomatoes. And so they had some tomatoes after the PDC committee meeting and I saw these tomatoes and somebody said, "Oh, somebody gave them and you can try them." Once somebody said they were hydroponic. And I said, "Oh, because hydroponic are just so deceptive. They're the beautiful, most beautiful red tomato till you bite into it and it's got zero taste." So I almost said, "I don't want a hydroponic tomato, it's too deceptive." But I already had them, so I took a couple of them home. And those were the best things I ever had, so fabulous. So apparently they're not hydroponic because it's much better and these are good. Fabulous. Thank you.
That's a very important point. Maybe would you like to comment on the growing technique? Just because I think it's really interesting. Just briefly, I think the audience here would like to hear it.
My new growing system is a replacement for hydroponics. I will be hoping to replace hydroponics because the way I invented my system was, I had the same problem as you had, hydroponic tomatoes, there's no taste. So the system that I invented, I wanted the best taste in produce that you could. And what I discovered in the way to grow with no fertilizer or chemicals, because when you're growing hydroponics, you're growing in chemical soup. It's pretty much what it is. It's a big batch of chemicals and everything. So I got away from that and got lucky and now I got the produce that tastes exactly like everybody had when they were kids. It's better tasting, it's more nutritional, and it's a lot better for you because it's not covered in sprayer chemicals anymore.
Oh yes, I forgot to include, we're also in support of entrepreneurship in Lynchburg, which is fantastic. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. If there's no further, oh, Councilmember Wright?
So I'm just, I was just looking at the lease and I just want to make sure I understand that the, for the first year, in lieu of rent, it would be 10 pounds of vegetables delivered to each of the city's recreation centers once per week for the full year, so it'd be 50 pounds per week delivered to the city. Is that right?
That is correct. We're going to work out those details once the lease is signed and once this is approved. Hopefully tonight, we will work out all the details with Mr. Leitner.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? All right, please cast your vote. Thank you. And the motion passes six with one absent and good luck with your business and the project. So thank you very much. Next is number 10, the public hearing regarding the petition of MTE LLC to rezone approximately 4 and 71/100 acres at 1415, 1417, 1501, and 1505 Kemper Street from B3C Community Business District Conditional to B3C Community Business District Conditional to amend proffers in order to increase the number of apartments from 57 units to 111 units and reduce commercial space. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Ms. Freshheisen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. This property is designated for mixed use on the city's future land use map and as the mayor stated, this property is currently zoned B3C. One of the existing conditions on the property is compliance with a site plan from 2007 which stated that the residential use within the property would be limited to 39% of the square footage of the building. This petition proposes to change that number to 79% residential with the remainder of the building used for retail. All of the new units would be built within the existing footprint of the buildings. The city's technical review committee reviewed this petition and had no comments of concern. Planning Commission recommended approval of the petition at its meeting on June 12th.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
Madam Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Dolan, thank you all for letting me come and speak to you. Many of the City Council members are here now. I don't know you all very well. I hope to see you all again a few times this year. I think Jeff was here for the first meeting in 2007 when we approved this previously. My client had a vision for Lynchburg. When he moved into Lynchburg in 2006, purchasing many of the downtown area properties, he had a vision to help grow a lot of the desolate areas or the downtrodden areas. He purchased the Dicky's Warehouse on Kemper Street, came before the board, I presented that project in 2007, and we had a vision for that property at the time. That vision hasn't changed, it's just transformed a little bit. At the time when we presented it, Jobbers Over LLC was not there, Kemper Lofts wasn't there. There are adjoining apartment complexes, one to the north and one to the southeast of us on Kemper Street. It is part of what we consider the community there. Oliver has a vision to take what he has in place now, 57 apartments and several commercial sites. He's not getting rid of the commercial sites, he's just downsizing their square footage. He wants to take several or many of his 3,000 square foot loft apartments and convert them to smaller units to make them more affordable for the folks to rent and to live in. His vision in 2007 has transformed because he's realized with the coming of time, the last 12 to 13 years, that he has to make changes to these buildings for him, one, to afford the utilities, for the folks that live there to afford the utilities, so he can keep the rents low enough for those folks to live there. Now, understand, this is not Section 8 housing. This is affordable housing. That my client has worked hard to keep the rent low, keep utilities affordable for those folks, and he's really trying hard to make this more affordable for the folks that are living there now. I think, you know, when you come into Kemper Street, it's one of the first things people see. I'm proud to say that on my website, Kemper Lofts and Oliver's Project and Jobbers Over LLC is part of my pictures on my website for Nixon Land Survey. He's been one of my best clients. He's done what he's told me he's going to do. He's done for the city what he's told them that he's going to do. And I think what he's proposing to do for his property now is gaining traction and moving forward with something that I believe will help him stay in Lynchburg and help the folks that live in this area have affordable housing. Obviously, we're not building any new buildings. We are going to transform some of the interior of the buildings to meet a better quality and a better quantity of rooms and apartments. Mr. Kootner is here to answer any of your questions, but the gist of it is this, he needs to be able to afford to do this, he needs to be able to afford to keep what he's got there, and the only way he can justify doing it is to increase the number of apartments that he has on site. I'm here to answer any questions. We're not, we're not, we're not really changing a whole lot, but we want to increase our number count for our apartment complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? All right, with no opposition, there's no need for rebuttal. The public hearing is closed and the matter rests with council. Councilmember Helgason?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as Mr. Nixon stated, I was here in 2007 when this first got approved. And, you know, as I look at the transition, I just think back at 2007. If in 2007, they would have said, "We want to change industrial zoned land into 80% residential", council would have said, "No." But they asked for only 39% of it to be residential, going from industrial to mostly business with some component of residential, and now it's completely changed. You know, so with that, I do appreciate the fact that we had industrial land that we then changed, and I recognize things change and whatnot, but proffers were given. then changed, and I recognize things change and whatnot, but proffers were given to say this isn't gonna be a bunch of apartments. Now it's gonna be. Now it's gonna double the size of apartments. I realize the markets change, I realize things change, but I don't think we need a bunch more apartments in this area, especially how it happened. You know, went from industrial-zoned land, which is gonna be factories and working and jobs, to then into a little bit residential but a lot of business, and now that business is gone and it's mostly residential. So as this is presented, I don't think it's, I recognize the differences may be slight, but to me, it's doubling the amount of the apartments. It's going from 39 percent that were gonna be apartments before, now overwhelming majority of it's all apartments. So if we would've looked at it first just as it was, I don't believe council would've said, given it a second thought to approve it on that path. So I'll be voting against this one.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? Councilmember Wright, and followed by Councilmember Perrow, and then Wilder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just be quick. I actually think this is a pretty exciting project, this expansion. You're taking an existing facility that's already apartments and continuing to develop the property. I think that's a good thing. It's close to the bus transfer station in Amtrak, so folks can, you know, walk between their home and transportation options. And it's an adaptive reuse of a facility that has been underutilized. So I think it has the potential to be an important part of the revitalization of the Kemper Street corridor, and so I'll be voting for it.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Mr. Lawton, were you first or did you? Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Councilmember Helgelson, I'm loath to change industrial zoning to something else. Over time, though, you have to recognize that the conditions change in neighborhoods, and this has become a neighborhood where it wasn't previously. Did, Mr. Nixon, you can just answer from right there, did you say a 3,000-square-foot studio apartment?
Yeah, 3,000 square foot studio apartments there, and that's one of the draw systems.
Well, if you're gonna talk that much, you need to come up to the bar.
I can respect Mr. Helgelson's stance. If I remember correctly, he had the same stance.
Let's talk about the studio apartments.
The studio apartments, the size of those studios apartments, what's happening is the utility costs for those are exorbitant to the folks that live there. In order for him to make this more affordable for the folks, he needs to take those 3,000-unit apartments and make them into two or three more apartments, thus being able to rent a cheaper rent cost, plus keep the utilities down for those folks that are living there. And understand something, he's not eliminating the businesses that are there, he's only downsizing their footprint. So the businesses that are there are gonna stay there. So technically, the same unit of business is gonna stay, but he just needs to increase the apartment count because of the size of the apartments that he has there.
Understand. Thank you, Mr. Nixon. So in looking at this, we had the discussion earlier about affordable housing and affordable units. This is an example where the developer, the business owner, the property owner, has made a business decision that reducing the rents is probably more economical for him and also benefits the community as well. And I think that's a good thing. I think it'll be good for this neighborhood for the transportation issues that Mr. Wright brought up. I think that's also good. So therefore, I will move that we adopt, is this a resolution or an ordinance? Sorry, I lost it. I couldn't load it on Granicus.
Amendment of proffer.
So it's an ordinance. I move that we adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All right. The motion has been made in second. Councilmember Perrow and Wilder, do you have further discussion? Councilmember Wilder.
Can I ask, I saw something in notes about the parking. There was a question about that. Is it adequate parking for the facility? I wasn't quite.
I understand that there's overlap in timing with the parking between the businesses that are there and the apartment uses. We've discovered that, and I've done some traffic counts in the past couple of months, I've been on that site several times, and I've seen where there have been overlap with parking, but there hasn't been any real issues. If you see our site plan, we've got the number count for the parking that's on site, and it's more than adequate. We've got a lot of folks using the transit right there, the Greater Lynchburg Transit Company, so the bus stop.
Okay, thank you. And what is the average price for the units? Something you downsized.
Oliver can answer that.
With utilities, it's usually about 700. They start around 500 and they go up to about 850. But the problem is because the units are so large.
We need you to come to the podium to talk.
Physically, the units are so large and they're part of an older building, and there are times when the utility costs.
Because people at home are watching you, that's why we leave you on.
There are times when the utility cost is as high as the rent. So basically, I've taken over the utilities. If you rent from us, you don't pay for utilities. You pay a flat $100 fee. And when the units are really large, you just can't maintain them like that. So what we're actually, we're actually not getting rid of commercial stuff. We're mainly taking stuff that we turned into very large studios and turning it into more smaller studios. That's mainly what's going on. The back of the flea market is turning into apartments because the flea market is just not viable anymore, there are just not many people coming to it. But other than that, it's actually the same group of commercial tenants we've had all along. And I mean, some of them were there from day one, they're still there. So while what you're saying is correct, and we may not have presented it correctly, but what we really did is initially, we had this gigantic building that was really actually scary. It was nine acres under roof. And we just rushed to get some people in it, and the units were very big. And then now what we're doing is we're making the units smaller. There is more demand, there are very few people building units that are priced where we are priced. We're not depending on any subsidies, we're not getting any money from anybody. We can actually offer them at that price because I did buy the building relatively inexpensive. And the other thing I'm gonna do is we're gonna install a first solar array on the roof on it, and we're not gonna have flip-service solar. I think we're gonna have a very large solar power plant there. My plan is actually to turn that into one of the most efficient buildings. It may actually already be one of the most efficient buildings in the whole city. I insulated the roof of it like you can't believe. There's nothing but LED lights in it, but it's so big. It's the core of the building is 200,000 square feet. So you think about 200,000 square feet, and then you've got 57 units in it. It's just, it's out of proportion with how people live, you know?
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Wilder.
All right, so the current, the new price would be 500 and up? Is that what you're saying?
Listen, I'm not a guy who goes by subsidies. I go by what the market says. The cheapest unit's a 500 bucks. I think my most expensive unit is 850. It's probably a three-bedroom, and it's probably one of the big ones left over. But don't hold me to it, because one of the things that I do do differently than everybody else is every single unit's different, you know? I don't believe in this repeat, 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 which is what everybody does now. I don't like it, I don't believe in it. We'll do a unit. I let my workmen decide that maybe we shift it a little bit, maybe we do tiles here, maybe we do something else there, maybe we, you know, take an old door and make the door the trim panel, you know? There are no two units that are the same in this building. There are not.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Dolan, did you have any?
I'll support this because I think it's a fantastic project, but I just, with what you're paying for electricity, you need to do solar panels, there's no question about that. What is your market? Is it college students, your rental market?
Well, it was extremely mixed in the beginning, but when we ended up with our neighbors being Section 8, it kind of went down to really mostly poor people. But really, now we have a very nice mix again, and it's, we have some older people, we have, you know, some single moms that don't have that much money, and I mean, it's a good mix. You know, we have bus drivers, we have different, it's a good mix. And it's been challenging. It's not a good neighborhood. It is not. You've done a very good job making that road look nice. It was very, very well done, but it took a long time. And the long time, we suffered. It hurt us. But we really are now at the point where we have a really nice community. If you walk in that building and you walk down the hallways, you'd be surprised how nice the hallways are, where they're full of pictures and there's some furniture in the hallways and like, and nobody messes with it. I mean, we are a community. Like, people do respect the fact that we wanted to look nice. It looks bad from outside still. I paved it the other day, but I haven't striped it yet because I want this approved before I stripe it. It's part of striping is a site plan and a site, you know, I don't wanna stripe it, you know? But we're gonna paint it, and we're gonna do some covered walkways where in most cases, if you pull up just about anywhere, if it's raining, you're not gonna get wet. So we're doing things to try to make it quirky, interesting, and cool.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further?
It's a nice community. It's a safe building. It's a, if you walk in at any hour of the day, you feel good, you know? And I've, like I said, I've, I can probably think of 10 right off the top of my head, tenants who moved in in 2006 and have been there ever since, so.
All right. Thank you. Any further conversation? All right, well, if there is none, please cast your vote. And the motion passes with six, five, two, one, no, and one absent. So thank you and good luck on the project, and we look forward to seeing the improvements. All right, next is number 11, petition of Lynchburg Renting LLC to rezone approximately eight acres at 710 and 714 Leesville Road from R1 Low Density Residential District and R3 Medium Density Residential District to R3C Medium Density Residential District Conditional, and for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of an 87-unit town home development. Staff will provide a brief summary of the request, and this is Mr. Martin.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the property is currently recommended for medium-density residential uses on the city's future land use map and has been at least since the year 2000. These are areas in the city that are characterized by single-family homes, duplexes or town homes with densities of up to 12 units per acre. The development as proposed is slightly below the density threshold recommended by the comprehensive plan. A traffic study was conducted by the petitioner and reviewed by the city engineer. The study indicated the need for a northbound left-turn lane and a southbound right-turn taper as they were slightly above warrants for the need. The petitioner has voluntarily proffered to construct these road improvements. Stormwater management is proposed to be handled by a variety of measures, most notably two stormwater detention ponds, stormwater management areas. The petitioner has also voluntarily proffered to over-detain stormwater in order to reduce downstream flows during storm events. As the property is directly adjacent to other townhomes and in keeping with the city's future land use map, the development should fit well in the area and have very little negative impact on the area. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning and conditional use permit after conducting a public hearing on May the 8th.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone to make a presentation?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of city council, my name is Bill Berkeley. I'm with Cardinal Survey and Design. We've been working on this project for quite a while. If you'll notice, I was previously with Berkeley Howell and Associates, and this project is still under that old title block because we've been working on it since 2007. But as Tom said, this is a project of 87 townhouses for sale. The project is intended to attract first-time homebuyers. It's intended to be affordable housing. The units are projected to sell in the 150 to 180 range when completed. As Tom also said, we knew that stormwater was a primary concern with the neighbors, with this whole project. So if you remember, this project came before city council in 2015 and was turned down at that time, and the primary concern at that time was stormwater and the effect on Lakeland. So when we redid the project for this presentation, a couple of things have happened. If you don't mind, I know the site plan is up there on the board, but I'd like to share with you the previous site plan to show you the differences. Since 2015, Lynchburg Leasing has been able to purchase this adjoining property from Mrs. Van Blarick and add it to the project site. The purchase of that property allowed us to move buildings up further front and put buildings on both sides of the parking lot going in, move the back buildings further forward, and allowed us to get an additional stormwater management area in the rear of the property. So now we can catch stormwater in two different locations. I know there was some conversation about elevations and the ability to get all the water to come to this pond, so we've been able to add another area back there for stormwater management. As Tom said, we've also proffered, if you're familiar with the current stormwater regulations in any development, a new development project, regulations require that stormwater runoff not only be contained to pre-development runoff conditions, but actually be reduced by 20 percent. You have to improve the stormwater runoff characteristics of a site by 20 percent in order to meet the current regulations. We have proffered to the city that we will reduce the stormwater runoff by 25 percent, an additional 5 percent reduction in runoff, and that will, in other words, the people downstream will see 75 percent of the runoff that they see now at a peak runoff rate. Now, we're not magicians, we can't make stormwater disappear, but we do contain it, control it on the site, and release it at a rate that does not cause erosion, that does not cause flooding downstream, and that's what we've tried to do. Stormwater is a continually evolving issue and a continually evolving field, and I believe, and I'm pretty sure, that we do a much better job containing stormwater and managing stormwater than we did 10 years ago, and hopefully, we do better than we did five years ago. So I think that we can address the stormwater issues, we can actually improve conditions downstream from what people are seeing now on a peak stormwater basis. As Tom said, we did have a traffic study done. The traffic patterns will actually provide improvements to the neighborhood that's behind this property, because right now, they really only have one way to get in and out of that entire neighborhood. With this connection to Middle Street, we will provide an additional means of ingress and egress. It will certainly help in an emergency situation, but the traffic study that we did indicated that by connecting to Middle Street, there will be enough left turns coming in here to go into the Lakeland neighborhood or the neighborhood off McVeigh and Middle Street, that that's what actually prompted us to meet the warrants for a left-turn lane. But the developers are happy to do that because we think that improves traffic flow, improves the conditions of the whole neighborhood. Again, I would like to remind you that these are townhomes for sale, this is not an apartment complex. These units will be for sale, and we hope that they will be considered affordable housing in this part of the city. Be happy to answer any questions that you all have as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Berkeley.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm Ted Kradak. I'm a lawyer here in Lynchburg. My office and residence are both in the city, and as Bill Berkeley just said, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend this rezoning and conditional use permit. And at the time, as you saw in the minutes of the meeting, a number of the commissioners complimented the gadgets on the making substantial. changes since the two thousand and fifteen, uh, attempt at rezoning. And, uh, I submit that the galleys have made substantial changes that, um, show the difference, when you look at the profits that have been made, show the difference between, uh, the initial, uh, attempt, uh, and the, the one in two thousand and fifteen. And as Bill said, acquiring the additional acre of land made a substantial difference. It allows fifty feet of buffer on the west side of the property, as opposed to the, I think, fifteen that's required. Secondly, uh, by adding the additional land, as, as Bill Berkley has said, the stormwater runoff, uh, is able to be, um, the management facilities are designed to reduce the current runoff by twenty-five percent, the, the rate of runoff by twenty-five percent. Uh, third, the connection with Middle Street, uh, and the improvements to Leesville Road, which, um, uh, the developer has said, uh, they will do, uh, will help with, um, uh, will help with the traffic, with connectivity, uh, into, into the Lakeland neighborhood. And finally, the addition of the additional land allows, um, the developer to provide, uh, a totlot or small playground for the benefit of hopefully, uh, young families that, that move into the area, um, move into the, the complex. Uh, as Mr., uh, as Bill said, Bill Berkley said, uh, these are not apartments. These are townhouses, and they're designed to be sold at a range that we hope, uh, young families and first-time buyers can, um, afford, in the hundred-and-fifty to a hundred-and-eighty thousand-dollar range. Um, as Tom Martin said, the future land use map recommends this property for recommend, for, uh, medium-density residential housing, and this project fits that bill. Uh, we submit that the Planning Department and the Planning Commission carefully reviewed the project, and as I've said, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend, uh, that you all, uh, to recommend that you approve it. Um, so we ask that the Council approve the rezoning petition is submitted, and I'll be glad to answer any questions which you all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kradic. Thank you.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Owen, I appreciate you guys meeting with me, uh, over the last couple of months. I've met with every one of y'all, with our team. Um, I'm not gonna go over all the stuff that these two guys have. I just wanna thank y'all for doing this, this improvement consideration. I do wanna remind you guys, I came to y'all in two thousand and fifteen. You offered these suggestions for me to do, so I've, I've taken care of every one of the suggestions that you offered and improved it. So, I'm hoping you'll consider this, since we did take your advice, and, um, you know, we spend this money to do that, and I'm hoping that it'll generate some, uh, this project, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Charlotte McLendon. I'm a property manager here in the city of Lynchburg, and I'm also an owner of an adjacent property at seven-one-six Leesville Road. I've been an owner since two thousand and six. I'm also on the board of that Homeowners Association, and I can vouch for the property there, um, that this builder has always addressed every concern that I've ever had, and I feel that an additional properties, townhomes in the area would increase my property values. I also think that a totlot is a, an excellent idea, I think, for, um, the neighborhood to have for young families to move in. And also, I know the market is very low in inventory right now for affordable housing. I have friends who've tried to buy homes at that price point and have had a very difficult time. Every offer is above asking price, and they go so quickly. So, I think that would be an additional, um, an exceptional addition to the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLendon. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Ma'am, my name is Jay Parker, and I own the property at seven-oh-eight Leesville Road, and I do not oppose the project. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Parker. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, Dan Utley. I also own property, four prop, four units there, and I am not, I am in favor of the pro-
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? All right, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
Hello. First, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Scott Chunin. I live at one thousand Lakeview Drive. Uh, first off, I'd like to say that the traffic, uh, improvement, or for us, is bogus. Ninety to ninety-five percent of those residents who live in the Lakeland property at this point have a straight shot to where they're going, down McVeigh Road. No one in their right mind would take two turns to get where they need to go, when they could go straight down the road. That's absolutely, I don't know why they even brought that up, 'cause that doesn't make any sense at all. The other thing, I've got a family, three kids, three dogs. I just had a medical facility built right next to the property. I know myself and several of the other residents would not appreciate at all if any more traffic is in the area. There's very few spots in the heart of the city that you can feel small. I live at the end of the cul-de-sac. I would not care for any more traffic myself. I am currently employed, contracted by AEP, and I'm studying to be an arborist. I'm studying to take the ISA test right now. The amount of natural absorption you will lose when you clear-cut that property will absolutely increase the water runoff. They will not be able to do anything about it. I don't care what they're saying about those extra spots. That's not gonna help. When you clear-cut that property, the trees, the root systems, what they were doing to grow, you're gonna lose all of that. I have somewhere else to be. That is all I like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Meredith. I live at eleven-oh-six Lakeview Drive. I live within the watershed boundaries, eleven-oh-six, right there within the dotted line, and my big concern is what Scott just addressed. Uh, the developer's done a good job of preparation. I think in all good faith, he's done the best he can. It looks good on paper. Uh, the mathematicians have done a good job. Here's some other math. Nineteen eighty-nine, I had four feet of water in my den from the runoff, from Hurricane Hugo. Now, that's not likely gonna happen again, but it emphasizes the main problem. I'm not gonna rehash that now, because I contacted each one of you by email and outlined it pretty well, and I'm satisfied that Mrs. Dolan and Mr. Perro came out and allowed me to talk you through, show you the topography, and talk you through my continuous water issues. And I, so I'm gonna, I wanna summarize my, my story here in this way. Uh, you owe it to the developer to consider very seriously, 'cause he's spent a lot of money investing in this, but so have these people here from Lakeland. Many of us have lived there for over thirty years. My house is paid for. Kathy and I, my wife, we've invested in this community in that we have given fifty-nine years of our professional lives as Lynchburg City School teachers. Uh, she was an elementary librarian. I taught band at Dunbar Middle School, Sandusky Middle School, at EC Glass, and at Heritage during my time. I coached Little League at Miller Park for fifteen years, and I also taught a seventh-grade exploratory photography class where I taught your son, Mrs. Tweedy. And, uh, my point is this, we weren't, we didn't, weren't just teachers, we were educators. We gave children life skills. We taught them to be good citizens who respect authority. And, and here's where I'm going with this. Kathy and I have decided to retire at eleven-oh-six Lakeview Drive, where we continue to manage water issues twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five. In the past six years, we have spent over sixty thousand dollars in renovating our home, and we would like to live out our final years in the watershed area, free from the fear of bigger water problems, and in peace. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have some photographs I'd like to pass around. Madam Mayor, City Council, my name's David Herb. I live at one-one-one-four Lakeview Drive. Also own the property at one-one-one-two Lakeview Drive. Uh, when the pictures come around, you'll notice the water coming down across the back of my property there. Uh, every time it rains, that water comes down across there. It's coming from Wexford Apartments. That's not my water. It's, it's almost like a small river coming down. Now, the smaller pictures are, are pictures of the second retaining pond that's not finished at Wexford Apartments. Now, that water runs down the center of Wexford, and it's, the retaining pond that's supposed to be there is, is up too far. It needs to come down some. But, uh, Scott Sablack, uh, stormwater technician is the one that's looking into that, and I've met him up there a couple of times, and, uh, you know, it sounds like he's doing everything he can. He's, his hands are tied, but, uh, if you've, if you've ever seen, I don't know if any of you have seen the videos that Jim had of the water, that water is not our water. That water's coming from Windsor Place. Now, what, what they want to do is add more apartments. No matter what their numbers are, that water still has to come out of two pipes, and it's gonna come down, and, gonna come down, and it's gonna come down like a stream, just like that, and it's gonna add to Windsor Place. Now, I, I don't see how you can take an existing problem and add more to it. I just, I just think the City Council ought to really consider the residents that are living there. Now, that's, that's not our water coming down across there. I've had to put in a, a basement sealer, and that's because that water that comes down through there, it settles in my backyard. I'm currently trying to get some, some kind of, uh, drainage system going in through there, but the water tables are coming in toward the back of that property on one-one-one-two, and it settles back there, and that ends up, uh, going down through a drain that's continuously flowing. And, I just feel like, uh, you know, we, we're taking, no matter what the numbers are on this new apartment complex, no matter how, how many, how many ways, how many retaining ponds they have, that water still has to come out of two pipes, and it's not being dissipated across eight acres. Uh, anybody else that would like to see the photos, I'd be more than happy to show them to them. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council Members. My name is Ronald Ferenger. I live at four-oh-two Woodland Circle, which is in that neighborhood, um, right up the first house from catching those, um, the stormwater that's running off of the, um, Windsor Hill, um, the Wexford place now. I am the first property that that water dumps onto, and I have lived at the residence for twelve years, and I've, um, contacted the Wexford Apartments, and I've contacted the City Engineer Department, and they said that they were going to address that, and here we are, twelve years later. The holding ponds don't hold anything. It, soon as it rains, it starts draining into my backyard, continues down, and ends up at Mr. Herb's place. And so, my concern is, we're not maintaining these things presently to the problems that we have, that I don't see how it would be any better, that if we decided to do these additional apartments in this, uh, area. Um, I can appreciate the time and effort that he's put into this thing, but we don't need a diff, a different traffic pattern in our area. We like our one-way, our street restriction, that's how you can get in that area. And the reason I say this is because I am a, a member of the Board of Directors for the Lake Association also, and we have discussed these things in the past, and it's the large amount of water that is being dumped into our lake presently, and there's a lot of silt that goes with that, too. So, the back end of our lake is filling up, and we are having to constantly address the quality of water that's in there. We haven't done anything, we haven't had to do any chemical addings or anything like that. We've been able to, um, keep the bacteria level where it's, um, for recreational uses and stuff like that, but it's the overflow of the water that makes me concerned. Last year, we had a lot of rain. You know, everybody knows we had a lot of rain, but there were several times, I have to monitor the dam also, it like, when, like, college, like, went in, I had to go in and start monitoring. We came close to our overflow system a couple of times, and if that gets into that area, I have to start the emergency action plan. That's where I call the city, call nine-one-one, and they start the process of doing that. And we came close to that, like, three times last year, 'cause the amount of water that's going in there too quickly. We can absorb, and we have drains and stuff that we keep open. We maintain the dam within, to meet the state requirements and the city requirements, and we've worked with the city for different things that we've, um, presently, we're working for additional drainage on the backside of the seepage system. But, um, we just, I feel that until we can correct what we have now, I, honestly, where we can afford to have additional apartments or, um, townhouses, not apartments, but townhouses, do the clearing, with the clearing of the trees and absorption and stuff like that, until we can correct these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
I'm Rebecca Richardson. I live at twelve-oh-four Lakeview Drive, and, um, my big concern that I wanna bring to your attention is the Earthen Dam, and I know that, um, Mr. Ferenger addressed some of that, but, um, we have a long history with that dam. Um, we spent a lot of money on studies, um, that required us to lower our dam sixteen inches. So, that's a big factor here that needs to be considered, that the level of our, our lake, because of this Earthen Dam, is a big issue. So, more runoff negates that study that we spent all those thousands of dollars on to do, and it's obvious that if you're gonna add pavement for streets and a hundred-and-fifty-seven parking spaces and eighty-seven units of roof, that it's gonna be more than twenty-five percent of the runoff that we had before from this wooded area. So, we've gotta think about a study to determine what's gonna happen with our Earthen Dam. I feel desperate for those people that, that live in that area below this, uh, proposed development. I feel desperate for those people that live in that area below this proposed development. They're gonna get washed away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, feel free to come up.
My name is Helen Goff, and I live at 706 Leesville Road. I agree with all these concerns about the water runoff. As a matter of fact, I'd like you to consider this. This is a picture of the management of water runoff at Windsor Place. That picture shows how that water runoff was handled. All of that yellow area you see there is standing water. Underneath that is a sheet of plywood, plastic sheeting that has been washed away by the water as it runs down the hill. And that goes back to Windsor, the Windsor Place, which has been there for some years now. And we addressed this five years ago, and I don't understand why we're back again, because if anything, the storms have gotten worse. We all know that. And that water is still flowing in from numerous spots up and down Leesville Road, and it's something that can be really serious. There's a gully back behind my garage, and this property borders that. That gully is deep enough that you can drive a school bus up through it. That is a good source of water. What concerns me also is the rooftops, the pavement, the sidewalks, all the things we have to deal with there. And another thing is the traffic. The traffic on Leesville Road since the intersection of Greenview Drive and Airport Road and Leesville Road has increased tremendously, and that is due, I would think, mostly to cornerstone on Greenview Drive. If you drive up Timberlake Road and glance over in that area where they continue to build more and more townhomes, notice the rooftops there. It's just so many of them, it's unreal. I don't really believe we need more townhomes in this area. The traffic has gotten terrible. I sit on my front porch in afternoons between, I'd say, 3:30 and 6:30 in the afternoons. You can barely have a conversation with someone sitting right next to you because of the level of traffic and the accidents. I've seen several deaths in front of my home. I've had my mailbox taken down twice last year. There was actually an accident at the top of the hill where Windsor Place is, where a core plowed in to the brick wall, well, stone wall that they have there that says Windsor Place. That was an accident. There's been about seven accidents in the last year there. So it's something we really need to consider, that traffic is getting horrible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Chuck Richardson. I live at 1204 Lakeview Drive in the Lakeland subdivision. I'm also on the Board of Directors, and I have a concern about our lake. There's an item that has not been mentioned today. We have, for the last six, seven years, spent a lot of money, just like the Lake, or like College Lake, dealing with the state and on these controls. You heard us about us lowering the water. We've done a lot of other excavation, trees, taking trees down, looking at increasing spillways and stuff like that. But no one has mentioned the people downstream from us. We have had several apartments recently built in the years that are living down there, and we went from a private little dam to a high-hazard dam with the state classification because of these people downstream. And now, we're at our max water, and you're gonna allow all this other water to come in there, and it could cause a tragedy to the people of this city down there. I'd hate to be one to tell you I told you so. I lived here for 50 years, raised three children, 10 grandchildren. They all love this lake. It's a wonderful community. And there is houses that you could buy in our subdivision for easy $180,000. I would take that far over a townhouse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
I've lived in Lakeland since 1968. I'm on my third home in the subdivision. I've seen a lot of changes and stuff like that. Years back in 2015, when we had water problems, I had a family member go to city council and had some of them come down. They put waders on and walked up the creek to see where the water was coming from. They fined them. We didn't get any help to repair the damage down at the lake because we couldn't prove how much silt came from that. If it's going, if y'all decide to give him this, what, how are we protected as far as, like, are they gonna get fined again, or is something gonna be done this time to help clean up their mess? Now, they're talking about putting in two, but you can already see, you're still having problems with the ones that were there before. And I don't understand why it's here this time, since it's already been voted down once before not to have it. There's a cemetery right there. Nothing mentioned about coming right into the cemetery with building this road. I'm just, you know, there's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 809 Middle Street. Used to live at 706 Leesville Road. Been there pretty much 53 years. I cannot imagine any more traffic being on Leesville Road. Even though you put in turns, turn lanes, they still are gonna be on Leesville Road. It's not gonna stop it. I can't imagine Middle Street being open. I played at the dead end myself. My kids have played at the dead end. And putting more traffic there, I can't even imagine it. I can sit on my mother's front porch, like she said, and I can be sitting this close to her. I cannot hear her conversation because of traffic. I think we have enough townhomes in this area, and just a little something to think about. I'm not saying, "Just listen to me." Just think about it. You own your home. You've had it. You've lived there. You've raised your children. Now you've got grandchildren coming in. All of a sudden, we have this beside your home. Your home, your home, your home. Would you like it? Would you like to live there? Would you like to stay there? Would you like the extra traffic, the extra noise? Would you like that? At your own home that you've had since 1966? Would that be something you would enjoy? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
I live at 440 Woodland Circle, and I just wanted to say, I don't understand how they can really say that if they put in these drainage systems, when you have natural land that absorbs water, trees, unlevel land that's not graded yet, to slow down the flow. You're gonna grade something from Leesville all the way to the back of your property, put into cul-de-sacs with pipes come out. All that water still is gonna come out. And it's gonna come out a whole lot faster. Also, what about all the chemicals and stuff that are on these properties? You know, from the cars and whatnot? Where is that gonna go? To the lake? You know, my kids swim there. I swim there. You know, just something to think about. You wouldn't want your kids swimming in that.
Can we have your name?
My name is Derek Schmelz.
Derek Schmelz, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You gave us your address. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition?
My name is Linda Coley, and I live at 1001 Lakeview Drive. There's been a lot of changes in our neighborhood. We just got an ICF home right next door, so we're gonna have lots of traffic from that. But the main thing is, I'm the first house below the dam. I love my house. We've been there for almost 30 years. And now, we flood. My garden was flooded for the first time last year. It was washed out. And that happened twice last year. And they've not done anything now, but wait till they do it. It's gonna be terrible. And the other thing, Windsor Hills was also built for townhouses for families to buy. I think only two people bought them. They're all rental property, and I feel like that's what's gonna happen here. It's gonna be all rental property. You know, it's just, you know, you buy your home, you do all your investments, and y'all change the rules. You know, you're just saying, "Well, your house don't matter. You just move." I love my house. I love being at the lake. I absolutely, I couldn't, I wouldn't wanna live anywhere else in Lynchburg. But when y'all take and change the rules, it's not fair to anybody. You're walking all over the people that have paid taxes for years and been involved in the communities for years, and now you're gonna flood us out. I don't think that's fair in any shape, form, or fashion. And as far as cutting through to Middle Street, that's also a disaster. If they don't have enough access to Leesville Road, we don't want that. We have enough as it is. We don't need anymore. But, you know, I just want you to think really long and hard about flooding all these people out that have worked hard and diligently in your community, 'cause that's what you're gonna be doing.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? All right, because there was opposition, there is a time for rebuttal.
I'd like to offer a few words of rebuttal. First, we've heard a lot of conversation about stormwater from Wexford. I'd like to point out that Wexford is a complex to the south of us on Leesville Road, and the pictures that you saw are water coming from, in a different drainage swale than we're talking about. A different drainage swale than releases from this property. They all eventually reach the lake, but that's not where we will be discharging water. You know, without going into a great deal of discussion about the engineering principles that go into stormwater design, I would like to refute the fact that we, that it's been expressed here that we can't control the rate of water release, because that's what stormwater management is. There's quite a bit of work that's gone into this from the state. There's quite a bit of work that goes into this from the Environmental Protection Agency. They develop guidelines, they develop regulations that prevent people from getting flooded downstream. And we designed to those regulations. And I think you'll have to trust that the engineering profession can handle that type of design work. The other discussion we've heard quite a bit about is the connection to Middle Street. Quite frankly, that's a city requirement. That's not something that we particularly wanted to do, but the city requires us to connect to Middle Street. And when we connect to Middle Street, that prompts the traffic study that says we have to have turning lanes. I think, quite frankly, it is good planning. It is good design to make that connection. It provides, like I said, emergency access in situations that might be blocked if there's an accident at McVeigh and Leesville Road. It would at least give somebody an opportunity to get out of that neighborhood if they needed to. So I think we've done the things that we've been asked to do. We've done the things that we've worked with the city on for almost five years now. And I would ask that you give this careful consideration and that you look favorably upon it.
The public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Council, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Perrow.
I have a couple of questions, if that's all right. Let me frame this in two parts, really. I'm trying to process this. We've received a lot of information. Oh, and just out of a point of interest, I keep this notepad up here for all our public hearings, and I take notes on every bit of it. Madam Clark, if you have another notepad somewhere, I'd appreciate it, because I realized I was dead on my, I've already filled up the last page and didn't request another one. But as I was flipping through to figure out where I'd start, I ended up on September 8th, 2015. I see that Mr. Funier, Mr. Meredith, Ms. Van Buren, Ms. Gregg, Ms., Mr. Richardson, and Mr. Taylor all spoke, and you all spoke except, with the exception of Ms. Van Buren again. So I was able to consolidate my notes. But anyway, I thought it was kinda funny that I had that documentation here. This is a challenge, because I absolutely hear what you're saying, and I hear your concerns. I've seen, Mr. Meredith, thank you for spending the time with me. It was eye-opening. So I'm gonna separate the stormwater issue right now from the land use issue, because I think from a land use issue, as we've talked about housing availability, as we understand, I just, I learned today that the new demographic projections or the new population projections that are for the city, we're looking to grow even further. We're gonna need additional housing. I think this is timely. I think it's an appropriate use for this space, barring the stormwater discussion. So I think that this use, like I just said, it would be appropriate. But as we talk about the stormwater, it's a classic property owner, property rights versus property rights. You've got the right to protect the property that you have invested in and that you own, yet the other, the owner, the developer, has the right to develop the property also in accordance with the law. So you've got a clash of interest here, which is obvious from tonight. I have some questions about stormwater, Mr. Martin. I don't know if you're the right person to ask about this. The previously mentioned development, what was the name of that development just to the south of this?
There's actually two townhomes. There's Wexford and then Windsor Place.
What years were they developed?
Wexford, interestingly enough, was zoned for the townhomes in 1981, but it doesn't look like they were actually started construction until 1997. Windsor Place was November 9th of 2004. It looked like they started construction somewhere around that time, too, and Lakeland was 1965.
Right. So that's, of course, the neighborhood that's been there the longest. Help me understand, yeah, the stormwater regulations and our requirements have changed significantly since, let's say, 2004 and current. Could you refresh my memory on the requirements for maintenance? Because what I'm hearing sounds like a maintenance issue. What are the city's requirements for maintenance for stormwater?
I'm gonna go ahead and let Director White talk with you about the maintenance.
Okay.
He's more familiar.
All right. Thank you, Mr. White.
You bet. So Wexford, which was constructed in 2001, we did not, the city did not have a stormwater ordinance in that time. We operated in an erosion control ordinance that only dealt with provisions for basic adequate channel. The city ironically adopted its stormwater ordinance- The city ironically adopted its stormwater ordinance in May of 2001. It then adopted revisions to that ordinance or updates in 2007, and the latest revision is in 2014. And as has been stated, the requirements have become increasingly more stringent with each, with each iteration. So the provision for the maintenance agreement really wasn't a strong provision in 2001. In 2007 was when water quality did, the maintenance agreement was still kind of a different provision as far as being able to go back. The latest provision says that the city has the ability not only to require maintenance, and I think it's been mentioned that Water Resources manages that program, but in the event of a severe nuisance, can go back and ensure maintenance, even if an agreement's not in place. If that helps.
Yes, sir, it does. So, looking back, if you've got runoff issues from the two previous developments, what is the city empowered to do about that?
Require them to maintain, and I'll look to Mr. Irwin to make sure, but require them to maintain to the standards that were in place at that time.
All right, so how does that change now, under a new development? How, would?
First of all, the requirements for runoff are managed through a completely different calculation. It's called energy balance, and it basically matches the pre and post-year storm, plus what's known as an improvement factor. That improvement factor is based on the size of the development, so it basically says you have to match the existing runoff and reduce it by twenty percent.
Even if the existing runoff is a forested area?
Correct, correct. And the considerations have to be taken based on forested land conditions, moving to developed conditions.
And moving forward, you'll have the ability to enforce maintenance on this? So, let's say it fills up with debris and is no longer, the water's no longer draining through the pond, and it's, you've got muddy water coming off the site. You have the, what, what could the city do about that?
That's correct. So, the city would require a maintenance agreement, annual inspections. Water Resources would enforce those inspections and go back and, and ensure maintenance. And they do that now for all, all stormwater facilities since this ordinance.
And you don't have that ability on the previous two projects?
No, and I don't wanna say, I think it was referenced that Mr. Sablack had been out and looked at some developments, but again, we're talking about different iterations of ordinance, so I'll have to defer to him. I haven't, I haven't seen those, but...
Why did we do the stormwater? What was driving the, what was the driving cause behind the stormwater?
Absolutely. It was, it was the growth and the amount of impervious cover. Again, an erosion control ordinance is about, is more about managing the site during construction. A stormwater ordinance is more about managing the site post-construction.
And we didn't have the stormer, the stormer utility until 2014?
No, sir, so we really did not.
Didn't even exist?
That's correct. So we really didn't have resources to fund the upkeep and maintenance. And that's why I say the maintenance agreements kind of existed, but the enforcement wasn't nearly the same as it is now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. White. I'll, I'll defer if anybody else has any questions for you while you're up here.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Wilder and then Councilmember Helgason.
So, make sure I can, I can understand. So for those other two developments, even though the, the requirement was not there at the time, can you go back and talk to those developers? Or have you contacted those developers about the concerns of the other residents?
And I don't wanna speak for Water Resources. It sounds like that they have at least looked at one of them. Again, I think the limitation may be as to maintaining it at the time of the ordinance versus current standards. They're different standards for calculating the runoff and the capacity now than there were at those two previous iterations.
I mean, but if we, if we addressed, I'm gonna, if we addressed with the current, with that developer, with the other property, about the concerns, did they have any obligations? Did they need to go and fix that situation or repair the situation?
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm not unsure of. I'm not sure about the specifics of that. It sounds like Water Resources has reviewed. I'm happy to follow up on that. But I, I'm just not sure of what was in place at the time and what, and what Water Resources enforcement has been on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just another, that's to you or to Mr. Martin? I'm not sure which one. It's, with the current ordinance that it is now, how many units can they develop? Or is it just for single families?
I believe it's zoned R1, so it would be right around 2.9 units per acre. But again, it's been recommended for medium-density use as a higher density since at least 2000 with adoption of the Future Land Use Map, which is up to 12 units. So, back in 2000, the city said, this is a reasonable place to have higher densities of up to 12 units. It's just not zoned for that yet.
Okay, all right. As far as the, with the Planning Commission, did they have any, did they address concerns from the other, from the residents about the runoff?
The public hearing at Planning Commission was nowhere near as well-attended as this evening's council meeting is. They did discuss stormwater, they discussed traffic, they even went back and looked at previous iterations of, of the plan. They, the Planning Commission was comfortable with the design and the over-detection of the stormwater, which led to the unanimous recommendation of approval to council.
So, with the new design, you, you went back and added some retention ponds for runoff? So is it, they added three now? So now you have two? Instead of, the requirement was one, and now you have two?
We have two stormwater ponds now. They, they collect water in two different places, so we have less water going to the original pond than we used to. And that water goes to the second pond, and we can contain more water, we can store more water on the site. And I did wanna point out one thing that, that was brought up, that I should've pointed out in rebuttal. The, the 2014 stormwater regulations that we work under now also require us to provide stormwater quality improvements. So, we don't have the pollutants running off. And with these ponds, these ponds will most likely, they haven't been designed completely yet, but they will most likely be enhanced treatment ponds that will remove the nutrients that you get from the first flush of a parking lot. So that first flush water, the first inch of water that runs off of a, a parking lot or any paved area is, is what carries the nutrients. We designed the ponds to, to eliminate that first flush so that those nutrients don't make it past the pond.
Okay, I think. So, Mr. Martin, I guess then, are you comfortable with, and you said they haven't really been quite designed yet, but given what he's discussing, are you comfortable with the, with the initial thoughts of their design? Were they placing those retention?
Well, more importantly, Kate Miller, our environmental reviewer, was comfortable. And I can assure you, they will have to actually now exceed state law by proffer if this is approved, and she, she ensures that, so, so yes.
Okay, all right.
Oh, well, just, so, it's not designed fully yet. You're, in effect, by issuing the proffer, you're promising that you'll remove not twenty percent as required, but twenty-five percent reduction
That's correct.
in the flow of water off of a forest?
That's correct.
Which is next to nothing, almost.
Right.
Okay. And is the city, and, and if that is the promise that he's making, is the city gonna approve any plan that says anything otherwise?
If it's proffered, no, we would not. It would, it would have to meet that twenty-five percent reduction.
And your environmental reviewer checks the calculations and makes sure that they're appropriate?
Absolutely, yes.
And if, if the environmental reviewer finds an, an issue, it's gonna be rejected?
Yes, sir. Or they'll have to come back to you.
Okay, thanks for letting me ask that, Mr. Wilder.
Councilmember Helgason.
Thank you, and this is for Kent. You know, we're hearing lots of things about the stormwater runoff, and obviously, a lot of the citizens that have been there have seen lots of stormwater running in their backyard and whatnot. And so, it, it, I, I can appreciate, you know, them hearing one thing, seeing another every day, or every time there's big rains. And two, when, when I hear these things, I wonder, you know, how does improving runoff go from a theoretical concept, like we're talking about, to the actual downstream reality that the people are gonna face later? How do you do that? And I know Mr. Berkeley said, trust the engineering, but we're now in a point of saying, we're not gonna approve it, or we're going to approve it. If we approve it, then we have to trust the engineering. If we don't make a change and keep it as an R1 and 24 units are built, there's nothing to trust. So how, how do we verify that? And how do we get that from a conceptual theory to then say, hey, we've heard lots of theories that don't actually pan out? How, how can we give assurance to the, the neighbors?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, you know, that's, that's really kind of the practice of administering ordinances. So, what the ordinance will, and I, I'll try to answer this, but make sure I'm on the right path.
And let me preface it again with one other thing, as I'm sitting here thinking. I know somebody had mentioned, you know, cornerstone and whatnot, and there's been issues. There, there were issues there when there were, and again, hate to put that on another developer, but there were issues that said there were, there was grass that was gonna be sown, and there were things that were gonna be taken care of, there wasn't gonna be dust, and there wasn't gonna be, all this stuff, of which a lot of things kinda got passed, so...
So again, it's, it's active construction, and I really don't make any, I can't make any excuses. There are projects that go well and don't go as well, and a lot of factors play into that, such as weather, that sort of thing. Obviously, those issues that we're talking about are happening during a dynamic construction site. Stormwater management is about post-construction, so it's, once the site is developed and fully paved and built, initially, the engineer has to figure out what their threshold is, what their number they're reducing to. So after they figure out that runoff factor of a drop of rain hitting at the top of the watershed, flowing all the way through the development, the time, and then they route it through whatever practice they put in. Then they figure out how much storage they need to make the ultimate reduction. The state sets those thresholds based on design storms. And I know this is getting really geeky, and I'm sorry, I'm a water nerd, but, but, but the, the piece of it is, is those wa, those design storms set volumes and rates of water of, that it's allowed, basically. Once the designer then comes in and provides the mathematical calculation that says, we are meeting that allowable rate, the staff reviews it, makes sure the calculations are correct. We then manage the project all the way during construction, and then they have to come back to us at the end and show that the feature, the factors, the ponds or the stormwater management facilities, were built per the design, and a licensed design professional has to sign off of that before we'll release any bond. If then the situation changes, we talk about things like clogging and maintenance, that's where the stormwater maintenance agreement comes in, and that's the other enforcement arm. Again, through a different department, but working across to make sure that that, the maintenance is ongoing for the life of the development.
So on this development, what is being proffered? Is that all the rain that happens now, there's a calculation that says, you know, whatever comes off. Now, they're gonna have the two ponds. One will hold it, and this pond is gonna be, imagine, a pretty big pond?
I presume. It hasn't been designed.
It has to be a really big pond, so several of the people had mentioned, how do you put all this asphalt and concrete and rooftops, catch all this water? And I guess you got two ponds, which have to be pretty big. And then, I, I heard him also mention that the quality of the water will be improved, which is better than, you know, but again, it gets, it's, it's a theoretical getting to the actual. So, so you've got two big ponds. One holds, if it overflows, it goes to the other. And then it's slowly going downstream? Is that the theory, or?
I don't, I don't know the routing, so I'll, I'll have to ask. You said you haven't designed it yet?
The ponds are not routed.
Come up here.
The ponds are not routed in sequence. The stormwater, stormwater comes to each of the ponds from a different direction on the site, and each pond acts independently. They, they, they're not in sequence. But each pond does the same thing. Each pond collects the water, and obviously, if they're two ponds, hopefully, they each have to store half of the water that ultimately has to be stored. But they, they don't work in sequence. They do work independently.
So how is it gonna be filtered? So you get all the, as somebody mentioned, getting all the stuff off of the, the driveways. It goes into the pond. I know you said the first flush, it kind of helps...
Take care of the quality, yes.
So how are you taking care of the quality before it goes into the lake?
Well, the, as I said, the, the first flush into those ponds takes care of the, the water quality improvements that we're required to take care of. We're reducing, the, the indicator that's, that we measure is reduction in phosphorus. And we have, when, when you go through the calculations of a development, we'll say that this development would, would create three pounds of phosphorus. I'm, I'm pulling a number, but if it requires three pounds of phosphorus removal, we would remove one and a half pounds of phosphorus in each pond, hopefully. And that's done with vegetation, with porous filters that the water goes through. After it gets stored, it goes through porous filters before it leaves the pond. And, and that's how, that's, that's how the quality is taken care of. The quantity is taken care of. Obviously, we store the, the water, just, just like Lakeland, just like the lake at Lakeland. It stores peak runoffs from the entire watershed and reduces the runoff downstream. These ponds have structures in them, big concrete structures, that have varying-sized orifices or varying-sized holes in the structure at different elevations that, you know, when you reach the one-year storm or the, the one-inch storm, there's a orifice that lets water out at a certain rate. When you reach the two-year stormwater level, there's a little bit larger orifice that lets water out at a different rate, and so forth, until you get on up to the, to the overflow of the, of the things. And the overflow will handle the hundred-year storm without washing out the dams and things like that, but that's, that's the quick and dirty principles of designing a stormwater pond.
Which, that's good to hear. I'm not, so, so with it, all the water and all the silt and all the runoff, it's gonna come into the, your pond, it's not gonna go to Lakeland? Any of the silting is gonna... So how does, how do...
Eventually, yes, eventually, the water goes to the lake.
The water, I, I'm interested, not necessarily the water, I'm interested in the silt or any of the stuff that hopefully your pond catches.
Right, that all gets contained in the ponds. We have four bays in those ponds that are settling ponds, so the silt gets out before it gets to the treatment areas. The treatment areas take care of the, the nutrients, as we were discussing, and then, when you get to the end, hopefully, if we do our job, we're releasing clean water.
So, so with that, and I realize we're looking at this one here, and I'm not sure who is the owner of the others, or who owns the property on the ones that were causing lots of problems. Lots of things can be renovated or retrofitted, I'm sure. Is there an ability on some of the other ones that are causing a lot of the problems, that the neighbors sent pictures, to be able to retrofit some of those to have ponds that will help clean that up?
I would say that they certainly could be. I, I, from, from my discussions with the, with the neighborhoods, with the neighbors at Lakeland, they, they essentially are no ponds at Wexford. I mean, there, there was one that might have been built, and there was another one that was supposed to be built that never got built, from what they tell me. I, I didn't have anything to do with Wexford, knock on wood, so... But, again, as Kent said, those projects went in before stormwater regulations went in, so somebody's got to have the authority, or somebody's got to, to, to make or encourage those people to make improvements.
And just like now, like proffers are given, if somebody, if the same people own that same property, if they don't, obviously, there's no ability to do that. But if the same people own that property that own this one, if it's an easy fix, I think that would be a good thing probably to do.
Probably, probably would, but this developer had nothing to do with Wexford that I know of.
And thank you. I, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any question for you, listening to this. Thank you. You can have a seat unless someone else has questions.
I do have a follow-up.
Oh, for Mr. Berkeley? Okay, go ahead while you're here.
Just because of this conversation, maybe think about the dam. And so when the dam analysis was done, they had to take into account the entire watershed and the amount of runoff coming from that entire watershed coming to that point, which is the outfall for the dam, and how that discharges downstream. So in doing such, they took into account the property that we're discussing here as a woodland property. And their calculation for runoff for that piece of woodland property would be very similar to the calculation, the pre-development calculations that you would have done.
Hopefully, it would be the same number, yes.
So, and you're proposing to reduce it, again, not by the required 20%, but by 25%. So what's the net effect that this development theoretically, as Mr. Huggson put out, what's the effect on the dam and the inundation study that they had to do?
Well, the net effect would be actually a, we're only a small part of the watershed, but it would be a slight reduction in the peak flows that would reach the dam. Because we're not discharging as much water as we would be discharging now. And, you know, the inundation studies that are done on dams, as I understand it, they are a high, they said they were a high.
High hazard.
Yeah, high hazard dam. That means that dam, the overflow and the things that were designed and the improvements they made to that dam are designed to handle the probable maximum flood for this area. And I think the last numbers that I saw for probable maximum flood were something like 25 and a half inches of runoff over a 24-hour period. Where normal designs for the 10-year and 20, even the 100-year storm are about five, yeah, five inches over a 24-hour period. So, I mean, that dam is designed to handle tremendously more water than we would normally design for.
Thank you. I just have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Berkeley. I don't have any questions for you.
I'd like to have one question, please.
Well, the public hearing is closed now, so.
They were allowed to talk. I just have one question. Thank you.
Ask me. Come to the mic, please. To the microphone. Uh-huh, I'm sorry.
I understand that Wexford Place was not his doing. Windsor Place was. And before allowing him to build another street with more problems, why can't he take and do what's right and take care of Windsor Place? Instead of saying, "Oh, well, I did everything I was supposed to. I'm not doing anymore. Tough luck." Now you're giving him a chance to do the same thing again. Again, I asked earlier.
I have to restrict it to just the question because the public hearing is over. So if you have a question.
Question. If it turns out that he builds this new street and the things do not hold the water and silt comes down, is he going to be responsible for repairing it? Or is the city going to do like last time, fine him and he pays a fine and we're stuck with the mess?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. And I'm not trying to be rude. I'm just keeping to the process. That was fine. So thank you very much. So my comments, and then someone can repeat after or say something else if you'd like. But I just had a couple of the questions of concern and I'm glad Councilmember Perro brought up the other properties and Mr. White came up to explain. Because I can commiserate and I've said it before when we've had developments with water in the household. So I understand water issues. I have it every time it rains in my house. So I fully understand the issues of water. And some of my concerns when I was hearing the comments were the fact of the other properties. And so, you know, it's a couple of things. One, all of this was annexed from the county. And so county needs, city needs are different and change happens, which is not acceptable or not comfortable all the time. So that's one thing. And everyone has invested in their properties. And so hearing Mr. White come forward gave me a little better clarity on what the expectations and the requirements were at the time of the folks when they were constructing these properties. And so while we were sitting here, I looked up Wexford Place. And so all of that's individually owned. And so my question is to Mr. Erwin, we could not go back to a developer if now the properties are individually owned. It would have to be to each individual property owner. Am I correct for?
Well, first of all, the, all the codes, building code, stormwater code, don't require you to upgrade or retrofit your facilities. What they require you to do is to maintain your facilities to the standards that were in effect at the time it was, the facilities were constructed. So the fact that these are outdated facilities, they could never be constructed today. They don't meet the requirements. It's the same thing with the building. You don't have to put in things that weren't required when they were constructed and we can't require the developer to do that or a property owner, you know, to do those things. And you can't condition, say, a zoning application on telling someone, "You need to go back and do something" that the law, you know, doesn't require you to do. But now, you're also right that if the property are now individually owned, the developer has turned over, you know, the title to those facilities, to the homeowners association or to the individual property owners, then it is their responsibility to make sure that the facilities are properly maintained, that debris and silt is removed, that weeds are cut back so that the facilities will function at the maximum for which they were designed, even though they don't have to be upgraded and you don't have to construct something new. And again, that's just as, as building codes, as stormwater codes evolve, you know, you're traditionally grandfathered and you're not required to update or retrofit or do things that weren't required at the time the facilities were constructed.
Okay. And I know that, you know, across the city, we have other areas where there are homeowners that tend to have some water issues that we've tried to mitigate, is what I guess. Because when we've had these record rains, we have other people in other neighborhoods that complain. My neighborhood, others complain. And then on another side of town, there are folks who have some, just the way the topography of a street is and curbing has been put in and all of that, that water runs. Because there is so much development on this side of town, and to me, this is a unique situation because we have a lake involved. And so my thing is, you know, for me personally, the owner has proffered to do more than was, what was expected in 2015. They are being held to higher standards of stormwater management than previously because of now, they're developing now. So I feel a little better on what will happen. My concern is, as a city, how do we help the issue that had less? I know, it's not going to be a popular answer. I get it. And I'm getting ready to tell everybody. It's not going to be a popular suggestion. But we have individual homeowners that have paid taxes. We have homeowners that have paid taxes and we have a lake involved. And so what is the cost of fixing the issue on property that we approved for development that we've been collecting taxes on, that is now transferred ownership to individuals that was held to a lesser standard of stormwater management and is causing an entire neighborhood issues with a lake involved? Which I think is an asset as a neighborhood, that they have maintained a lake. And I've known people who lived in the neighborhood for many years. So it's always been kind of a jewel, if you would. But it's unique to the character of neighborhoods in our community. And so I'm asking, what as a city can we do to help assist or research to help assist the water issue here? I mean, we can kind of raise our hands and say, "We don't have any responsibility anymore, but we're still collecting taxes from everybody involved." And so I think we owe it, because of the character of the neighborhood, it's unique. There's a lake involved. I think we owe it to, one, I'm not going to say, which is unpopular also, to stop the development of this property. But I think we've got to help do some evaluation and some research and some assistance to help this runoff from these other properties. Holding who we can accountable, but also, I know, it's not popular. The city manager's looking at me, I know. Because anytime we talk about money, it's not, you've got to understand, it's not popular. It doesn't feel good, additional money. But I think we just have a unique situation here. That's just me. And I think the private owners have done what they could. They're making their home improvements. They're, you know, they're doing what they can in their backyards. But no one's looking at me to say anything. So are we taking it in? Am I?
One thing I may add on that.
Yes, uh-huh, please.
It would be to say, I guess, first of all, to look on these ones that are next door. Whichever ones that we're talking about that are causing a big degree of the problem, either Wexford Place or Windsor Place. What kind of, this development, they're proposing the water management, stormwater management, now on another ones, assuming the other property owners say, "Yes, we're delighted to do it." What kind of money are you looking at building the ditch and running some pipe? I mean, you're looking at 10 grand? You're looking at 500,000? I mean, that may be a way to kind of, if you, again, obviously not holding you to this in a budget, but, I mean, what is that kind of money?
We don't know. Is that what you're? Correct. We do not know. And staff would have to go back and do some heavy thinking about lots of things that are involved here regarding, you know, private property rights.
It would have to be, of course, them saying, "Yes, we want this." And that's why, what I mentioned before, that if this property owner is the same as the previous property owner, you know, a lot of times they fix up stuff so they can get something approved. You know, but if they're totally different owners, obviously, that can't connect. But if there are problems on others, we can't just kind of blindly say, "Hey, trust the engineering" as though, you know. Is there any kind of estimate? Are they 10,000 bucks? 100,000?
I'm just really not familiar with the sites well enough to make that. I mean, again, with your direction, we would be happy to look into it.
Maybe, Mr. Gallier is.
If you don't mind my objection. Windsor Place Town Homes. Windsor Place Town Homes, I developed.
Okay.
We are inspected once a year by the City of Lynchburg. We have to do whatever they tell. We've cleaned that pond out twice.
So there is a pond already there?
Windsor, it's there.
Okay.
That we designed based on the criteria the city's set up. And that's been cleaned. Once a year, we get all the bushes cut, the trees cut. And we've, if I recall, in 12 years, we've dredged that pond twice. So we handle, I'm the president of the association, we handle ours. Now, as a Wexford, I have no idea what they do there. But I can truthfully tell you, ours is maintained.
And so that one is not causing the problem?
Ours is not causing the problem.
That we see the pictures of.
Yes.
Okay. Good deal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Perro.
Yeah. I've got, as you might expect, I've got some opposition to doing, to mandating work on private property. But I think there's, you asked another question, though. What could, or maybe you did, but what could we do to affect this case now? And I know we're so far off the original subject of this, it's getting dangerous. But we have a stormwater fund that we're using. Maybe it'd be worthwhile to have a discussion, not tonight, but later, about how to use that stormwater fund that we have to incentivize, maybe as a grant pool, for owners that voluntarily want to improve their stormwater maintenance and be good neighbors. I don't know if many would, but if there's some money involved from a fund that's already set up for stormwater improvement, it may be worthwhile. I don't want to have a discussion about this tonight because we've got a lot of people here. But maybe that's something to talk about at a later date.
We could certainly look into that.
Because normally with the stormwater, people pay for impervious, you know, so they pay a fee for an impervious area. So if the old ones have all the impervious area that's running off, that could actually, could say, "Hey, we'll help and now we'll cut your, you know, something because it's giving less impervious area that'll be channeled." So.
Oh, Mr. White.
I'm really sorry. We've talked a lot about the design of this site, which you've heard is still conceptual. I think we need to at least give the clarification of what's in the proffers and what they have proffered to do and what they have it, because we've heard a lot. Mr. Martin.
Thank you. So there was a lot of talk about water quality. And I believe it was explained to council that the water quality is looked at as a reduction of phosphorus loading, right? And that says it relates to the Chesapeake Bay, okay? So while they have proffered to over-detain the quantity of it, they will have to meet water quality standards. But state law allows them to do that by purchasing credits off-site, okay? So they can purchase nutrient credits. I believe there's still a bank in Buckingham. And those water quality would happen in Buckingham County, not the City of Lynchburg. I don't like that. The State of Virginia doesn't care what I like. But council needs to understand that. Now, in terms of sediment, dirty muddy water coming off, that's different. That should definitely not come off the site if everything's built and implemented correctly. But in terms of water quality, the actual phosphorus reduction, there's nothing to say that it has to occur on this site.
So that actually could, though? If they had a proffer that said, "We're not going to be buying the credits from Buckingham. We're going to actually fix this water."
It could, yet we ran into this on previous projects and I believe the opinion was, is that we could not push or require or even accept a proffer that,
understand.
Something that circumvented state law.
Okay. So Councilmember Wilder.
For approval.
All right. Is there a second? The motion has been made for approval. A motion has been made in second for approval by Councilmember Wilder and Councilmember Perro. Count, either one. Councilmember Wilder first.
I'm going for approval because a lot of the issues are by another developer. And I think the city needs to maybe contact that prior developer or either look to see what support for that situation could be done by the city. As far as talking with the developer or just seeing what else could be done to address those concerns. Second point is the developer has purchased property about 2007 or before or so. So for several years, they've made several changes. They've been back several times, I see, way prior to my time. They've been back several times to the city council with changes, changes to the property. They purchased additional property. They made adjustments. They addressed a 25% reduction in the stormwater. They're even adding a safe recreation area they're even adding a safe recreation area for the youth in the community to make it more family-friendly. So because of the changes they've made, because of the additional retention pond, I guess it's called, I believe, the additional holding pond order, because of the additional retention pond, they're making additional efforts than was required. So I'm moving, and also because the standards that, for the other development were that the same currently, hopefully this new standard will address the issues that they've had now versus they didn't have prior. So because the standards are different, hopefully they will have some of the same issues. That's why I'm moving for approval.
Thank you, Councilmember Perrow?
As I stated earlier, the precepts for the development, setting aside stormwater, are fine. I think this is a rational and reasonable place to put a development this magnitude. Leesville Road is designed for this order of magnitude of traffic. We've got the need, it's an appropriate location, that the stormwater is the hang-up on it. My problem here, and the issue where I'm absolutely bound on this one, or conflicted, whatever you want to say, is I have absolute empathy with what the issues that you've brought up tonight. I know what you've seen, but for me, I'm a professional engineer. Mr. Berkeley's a professional engineer. Mr. Berkeley's telling me, that's his stamp on the top corner, I zoomed in to check. That's his stamp in the top corner there, that a professional engineer is going to guarantee that it will do what he says it's going to do. For me to vote against that is to say that I don't believe in the integrity of my profession, of one of which that I'm a member. I do believe in the integrity of my profession. I do believe that the stormwater will be reduced in the manner that Mr. Berkeley says it will be. And I believe in the integrity of the reviewing agencies to ensure that those calculations are checked. To vote against it would absolutely conflict with, by professional standards. And, you know, I'm conflicted because I want to, I feel for you all, but I believe that the engineering is good, the engineering will work. And it better, because as a professional engineer, he's gonna sign off of it and says that it will. And so there, that's why I'm voting this way.
Thank you, any further discussion? Councilmember Helgerson?
Mr. Martin, what kind of bonding is there? If it, you know, I can appreciate, I'm not a professional engineer. And, you know, what kind of, if it doesn't work? You hope it does, of course, but I realize things happen and you don't...
Prior to the plan being approved and permits being issued, the engineer will have to submit bond estimates for the erosion and sediment control measures as well as the stormwater measures. Those bonds are not released until the site has been developed per the plan and everything is working correctly.
But Mr. White said, "This isn't just about the building, it's the actual implementation and how it actually works later." So how is a bond gonna be released if in 20 years it doesn't work like it said it did?
Well, that's the maintenance agreement.
Okay.
The maintenance agreement has to be in place also, and that's what requires annual inspections and allows the city to go in and make such a, basically make the homeowners association or the developer, whoever's in ultimate ownership of those facilities, make them work per this plan. So the city's in a much better place today than we were in 2004, because we didn't have those maintenance agreements. Once they were put in, if they, we could ensure they were put in correctly, but if they weren't maintained and they stopped working, we have no mechanism to go back and really ensure that they're fixed.
And I guess one other question on this is, as I think Mr. Behringer said, you know, which I've always, and I agree, that I hate that concept of what happens, somebody does something wrong and they pay a fine to the city who wasn't aggrieved, you know, didn't... So if they do something wrong, it ruins the lake, and then they pay a fine to the city. I mean, and the lake is still ruined, it doesn't go to actually fixing or, you know, fixing the thing that they damaged. How is that handled if they didn't do it and there was a fine?
Well, I would say the best-case scenario is to always make sure that that doesn't happen. And the city's also, you can jump in when you like, is also in a much better place now with the amount of environmental inspectors that we have out on-site. We have building code officials that are trained in environmental inspection, so we have more eyes on the site. However, if something did happen and the lake was to get sediment, I believe DEQ would become involved with it. Or it could be a civil case, yes.
Certainly, the property owners would have a claim against the developer if the developer does something that damages, you know, their lake. That is just basic tort law. If somebody does something that damages your property, you can bring a civil lawsuit, you know, against them. So that is a right that the property owners have regardless of anything that the city does. In addition, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality might get involved in this. They have the authority to enforce, you know, stormwater violations. Again, if they determine that there has been a stormwater violation, they do have the authority to get involved. So there are potentially three different parties who can be involved. The city, to make sure that our ordinance is complied with, to make sure that the proffers are complied with. DEQ, possibly if they're in violation of the state's environmental regulations. And then three, the property owners, if they can show that the developer did something that damaged, you know, their property, they don't have to rely on the city or rely on the DEQ, they can bring their own civil action to try to recover those damages.
Thank you. And just, I guess the last thing, you know, I can appreciate Mr. Gallier and what he has stated, and I represent the citizens there and have for a long time. As I look at this, you know, I didn't realize those iterations of the stormwater management. And I guess I'm planning on supporting the citizens that I represent. The good thing with this is the fact that this didn't get approved November 13th, 2007, because there wouldn't have been anything like we've got now. The good thing is it wasn't approved September 8th of 2015, because we now have, it sounds like, a lot tighter stormwater regulations. I'm not planning on voting for this, because I haven't seen a compelling reason to say why we should go from an R1 zoning to an R3 zoning. I do greatly appreciate the plans that were designed. For me, it's hard to just trust some stamp that's up there, and I can appreciate that, and I'm sure the citizens as well. It'd be nice to make sure that you see this happens and it doesn't exacerbate stormwater, you know, current stormwater troubles.
Any, Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I appreciate what Councilmember Perrow said about the, I want to separate my comments from Mr. Gallier and the merits of his proposal, which I think are quite sound. It's, I think it's a reasonable use of the property. And I really appreciate that he has really tried to work with council and be responsive to the concerns that we have raised. Not me, I wasn't here, but concerns that previous councils have raised regarding the property. But hearing folks this evening from the neighborhood who talk about the quality of life and the impact of this development certainly would have, you know, for example, the folks on Middle Street, for, you know, that's a direct effect that we know it would have. I'm not sold on the traffic question. And certainly, you know, I respect Mr. Berkeley's commitment to making sure that it exceeds stormwater management, but I can't in good conscience, based on the information provided tonight, I can't vote for this development. I'm just not convinced that it wouldn't be to the detriment of the neighbors.
All right, any further discussion? Vice Mayor Dolan?
Well, this has been a really tough one for me, and I appreciate all the work that the developer has done and really gone above and beyond to solve the challenges of the site. But I'm not really convinced that there will not be a future serious water problem for the residents. And I think they bring up a compelling argument against the project. So I really feel that I cannot support this project either.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so we have two support, three no support. So what happens if we have a tie?
You know, I've always wanted to say, "It beats the hell out of me".
I wasn't expecting that, Walter.
We are doing your review, I think.
Yeah, the answer is, it takes an affirmative vote, a majority vote, to grant a zoning application. So if the motion fails on a tie, it means the application does not get granted. And, you know, the council has done what the state code requires, it has held its public hearing, it's debated it, and it's acted on the petition. But there was no majority vote, so the application, you know, doesn't get denied.
Councilmember Perrow?
So, Mr. Irwin, if an application is denied, then there is a holding period before it could ever come back in front of council. I think it's two years, is that right?
12 months.
12 months before it could come back?
Unless five members of council vote to bring it back early.
Okay, so if a motion, if, if, I don't know how this one's gonna come out, if this motion does not pass, it does not fail either, does that 12-month criteria kick in, or does that beat the hell out of you?
Yeah, that is one where, yeah, I believe, under the wording of our ordinance, it wasn't denied. So it could possibly come back. But again, you know, there would have to be a significant change, you know, to it. Once council has heard a petition, it doesn't have to hear the same petition again, you know, for a period of 12 months. So if the developer wanted to bring it back, unless council voted to bring it back, the developer would have to make some significant changes to what's being proposed in the current application.
But the developer wouldn't be restrict, restricted from bringing it in?
No, wouldn't be restricted.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, does everyone understand that? I'm being clear for myself, too, because of the proffers, because of the additional requirements, that I would be in support of it, so that's why it would be a split vote. But I, that's why I brought up the point of how can we resolve some other issues in this situation? Because, as what has been explained before, so if it does not pass, can we then, what I'm hearing is, vote to bring it back? Because it's not denied within 12 months?
You know, council can, council's rules of procedure, well, we actually say, "We will not use a motion to reconsider in a zoning, you know, matter", you know, that's under council. Now, that's a rule of procedure, that a majority of council could say, "Well, even though that's our rule of procedure, we don't want to follow that rule of procedure, and we want to vote, you know, to bring it back." So, you know, council could vote to bring it back if it thought there were issues that need to be, you know, addressed.
And at the same time, the developer could make changes if they wanted to, and it sounds like it's not a 12-month?
Yeah, I mean, again, developer could make, as long as the city says, "Yes, these are significant changes", from what council acted on at tonight's meeting, then the developer could, you know, file another application, go through the process again, and have it come back to council.
We can't address another question, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councilmember Perrow?
Would it simplify things if I made a substitute motion to table indefinitely until, or until the developer wanted to bring it back?
I would prefer that.
Then I'll make that motion if that helps. Just postpone indefinitely, basically, would that be appropriate motion, Mr. Irwin? I don't have my rules with that.
There's no requirement that city council has to act on a zoning petition the evening of the public hearing. State law gives city council up to 12 months to act on a zoning application. So if council wants to postpone action to give the developer an opportunity to submit some additional information also, or to give Councilmember Nelson an opportunity to be here for the meeting, so it wouldn't necessarily end up in a tie vote. Council can postpone action on this item tonight. But it will have to take, as long as council understands, within the next 12 months, it will have to bring it back and will have to take an act and vote on it.
Is there a way to just defer this matter? We have to make a decision.
Within the next 12 months. Again, state law says, you know, a governing body has to...
So you might as well make a decision or a non-decision.
Well, has to act on it within 12 months, so, but for, if you want to give the developer an opportunity, because council's certainly done this before, to address some of the concerns that the developer has heard, you can postpone action on it indefinitely and see if the developer wishes to submit additional, you know, information, you know, to council.
I'll offer that as a substitute motion, see what council thinks.
All right, is there a second for the substitute motion? I'll second it. I'll second that. Okay, yeah, I'm gonna second it, because I understand we're split right here now, I understand that. And so that means there is support for the project. I, right now, don't know what additional information we need other than what I have proposed asking from the city regarding the other properties and/or what Councilmember Perrow added regarding the stormwater. You know, I don't know how much can be brought back. I know we're asking staff to do a little bit more and maybe a lot. But I think because the neighborhood and the affected residences, residents have, this is their repeat time coming back, one, two, three times, depending on how you, you know, to address something that is, that was not highly regulated. And so I think we owe it to them to have that information brought back to us of what options are. So it doesn't give the developer what he wants this evening, but I hope the residents understand that we want to, we want to do something. You know, I like to create win-win situations where we can. But this is, to me, is a little bit more in-depth and unique, and it goes back to how do we support our neighborhoods? You know, even though you may not have gotten the vote you thought. But I think we are taking into consideration all of the factors, all of the information, all of the developments, and we're asking staff to come back to us with some answers or something. Again, we do have a council member out, so that gives that council member an opportunity to weigh in on this as well. So let's take a vote on the substitute motion, which is to table this until a later date, which could be up to 12 months, and have all of that information brought back to us. Oh, Councilmember Wilder?
So, within a time period, is there certain restrictions as far as the filing by the developer? As far as the time period, does it have to be like a 30-day notice or a 6-day notice so the residents can know? How does that process work now? If we say it up to 12 months, so what's the process for them? Do they...
Well, there isn't, I guess, a specific process. Usually what happens is, in a situation like this, the developer will notify city council that, you know, they are ready to bring it back. Or council will ask, say they're ready for it to be brought back. It would be placed on the agenda. The normal advertisements, you know, would go out, and people, citizens would be notified in the normal manner that this item is coming back for consideration.
So to follow up, can I ask staff, given the current workload, when do you think, when is an appropriate time? Can we, right, well, it's up to the developer, but for the information that we're asking for.
What beats the hell out of me?
Sometime this fall, okay. Fair enough. I'm just, I'm trying to get an idea from us. Not to, you know, I know, we ask you all to do a lot, so I appreciate that. All right, okay. So that's...
The motion is to table indefinitely?
Yes, to table indefinitely, thank you. And the motion passes four to two with one absent, so that's where we are right now. Sorry, thank you. All right. All right, let me get back to where we are in our place in the meeting. Okay. All right, thank you. Next is general business, we still have some items to conduct. We still have some items to conduct, so I'll just ask everyone to kind of quietly leave if that's okay, sorry. General business, this section includes general items of new business, continuation of the discussion of the petition of Oak Link LLC to rezone approximately 39 acres at 207, 301, 305, 400, 401, 405, 408, 409, 411, 412, 415, 416, 417, 420, 421, 424, 425, 428, 429, 432, and 436, Preserve Drive, 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 104A, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, and 112, Clopton Court, from R3C Medium Density Residential Conditional to R3C Medium Density Residential Conditional, to remove a previously approved proffer requiring the construction of a left-turn lane from Link Road onto Preserve Drive. Staff will provide a brief summary of the requests. Mr. Martin?
Madam Mayor, I believe you missed one of the addresses.
Oh.
No, I'm kidding.
I was about to say, I tried to be very close to that.
This petition was heard by city council on June 11th. Council tabled the item at that time due to a concern with utility lines that may be left if the proffer was removed. Since that time, the petitioner has submitted a agreement with Verizon as well as a copy of the payment to Verizon, which removes any concern that staff has, and the city is now assured that the second set of utility lines will be removed. Just to remind you, the planning commission did recommend approval of removing the proffer, and staff is fully supportive as well.
Make a motion for approval?
Thank you, is any further discussion?
Just the fact that what we said last time, we wanted to make sure, you know, obviously you can't, just like we learned with the last development, you can't negotiate after you already approve it, and so we now got the check on this one, we got the requirement of the polls done where the city taxpayers doesn't have to pay for it, so now we can build what the traffic engineers, or remove that proffer for the left-turn lane, so. It was good, I think it was a good procedure.
All right, thank you, and any further discussion? All right, thank you. If no further discussion, please cast your vote, and the motion passes six to one absent. Thank you very much, uh-huh. Thank you for sitting through the evening. Consideration of adopting a resolution to approve the renaming of a portion of Simon's Run, Ms. Glasgow, Glasgow, I'm sorry, will present this.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, Mike Davidson, the Director of Economic Development for Campbell County, has requested a street renaming for a portion of Simon's Run. Campbell County is planning on extending Simon's Run southwest to Airport Road, and if the portion of Simon's Run that connects to Leesville Road is not renamed, there would be two prongs to the Simon's Run fork with the same street name. To avoid future confusion, the county would like to rename the short segment perpendicular to Leesville Road as Compton Way, which would allow the longer soon-to-be extended road to be entirely called Simon's Run.
Thank you very much, and this was reviewed by the Physical Development Committee this morning, so I'll turn to Councilmember Perro, this chair.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. In a shining example of city-county cooperation, the Physical Development Committee agreed that this makes a lot of sense and recommended that this be brought forth to council, and I'll make that as a motion on behalf of the PDC.
Thank you, there's no second needed. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Helgason?
I really wish they would have, lots of you who weren't here, when this development, it should be renamed Helgason Run, and let me just tell you why. This development, first of all, came forward with the Old Navy and all that, there was one way in and one way out. With that development, there's like 1,400 parking spaces and all of this stuff that was there. I said, that can't be good planning, we have got to have another road, and that's when the county said, we are going to make this Simon's Run, and so I'll gladly approve it, even though it doesn't say Helgason Run, but I call this Helgason Way, just for a reason. Yes. So they actually, they built this road, which is fabulous, and I'm sure, I'm sure the county's loving it because you now have got lots of places that you're having some good economic development, but it's also much safer, much better ingress and egress rather than having one way in and one way out. Would you agree, Mr. Martin?
I agree with the next activity all.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote, and the motion passes six with one absent, and thank you for sitting through the entire evening, thank you. Next is consideration of a closed meeting to consider appointments to the Youth Services Citizen Board A, and then I'm going to flip these two right here. Next, I'm going to say there's consideration of a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel concerning the case of Walker T. Sigler versus Edward George Farron Jr. and Savannah L. M. Simmons pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended because discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city. And then next, I will read consideration of a closed meeting for discussion and consideration of the city manager's and the city attorney's performance evaluations pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into a closed meeting?
So may I?
Thank you, the motion has been made in second, please cast your vote, and we are in closed meeting, thank you.